You're good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:11 PM. This is the Department of Public and Social Security. This is Brooks here.
This is Laura here.
This is Isaac here.
This is Jill here.
This is Nick here.
This is Thomas here.
Here.
This is Al Gore here.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Congress Meeting Act was passed to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice for attendance at meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests will be discussed and acted upon. In accordance with provisions of the Act, the Rockaway Township Board of Education has closed notice of the date, time, place and said meetings to be published in their annual record, Star Legend and our school district website. Does any board member wish to object to the conduct of this meeting for the purpose stated in the public notice? And I just have a motion to leave the floor.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Thomas here. This is Brooks.
Can I show your hands? Thank you.
Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
All moved.
Second. This is, uh, this is Jill here. And then this is Brooks. Let it be noted at 6:13 PM.
Can I just have a motion to add to the executive session, please?
Second.
Can I show hands? Thank you. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our pseudo-in-person/virtual board meeting. We're one step closer to some kind of war. And it feels good to be in person and working with everyone. I will begin right away moving towards public discussion. First, I'm just going to read our disclaimer. During the course of the board meeting, the Rockaway Township Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operations of the Rockaway Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to identify themselves by name and address and to limit their comments to items listed on the agenda and/or items directly related to the operations of the school district. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and are responsibly forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by the members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in the comments and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Before we open up to public comment, I just wanted to reiterate that we probably have a few people in the room waiting to talk. I just want to be mindful of the time. On our agenda, it says that we allow 15 minutes and 3 minutes per person. I would like to make sure everybody has that opportunity to speak and just be mindful that this is a public comment section. And I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak within a timely manner. So with that stated, can I please have a motion to open to the public? So moved. And on the side? Mrs. Shields, can I please have a show of hands? Thank you. Now, I believe we have a few members of the public in our waiting room?
Yes. Okay. There will be some feedback with sounds of refrain from speaking into the right parts until she starts speaking.
Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, you can.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. All right. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to field my questions. And I hope that you guys can be of some assistance for these answers or kind of direct me to who I should be speaking to.
Sounds good.
Can you hear me still?
Yes.
I apologize. There's a very large delay and a lag. But my first question is, what is the plan for elementary school children with IEPs when school is transferred to virtual? Unless there's a governor's mandate for a shutdown, will the district be providing home instruction for these children in addition to the virtual format?
Is that your full public comment? She's watching the live stream personally. We instructed her to turn her livestream on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you hear my question or should I try that again?
We heard your first question.
Okay. And then.
Please turn your livestream off in the background.
Yes, I just did.
Thank you.
And my second question is, will teaching services at the elementary school level be streamlined for consistency across the elementary schools? Will teachers be asked to stream lessons and teach the common core material as opposed to what was exactly offered in the spring? Will there be materials dispersed to students and families so that these children can write as opposed to just being on the computer, especially for children below fourth grade where this is not developmentally appropriate?
Thank you for your questions. I'm going to ask Dr. Janomian to please respond.
Thank you for your comment. As a quick response, I can tell you that yes, we continue to, or to increase the collaboration across the grade levels for greater synergy. Yes, more live instruction, live streaming at certain grade levels is expected as we move into September reopening. And we will be distributing materials as well. Regarding your question about home instruction, that's decided on a case-by-case basis. In many cases, requiring medical, medical documentation. If you'd like to reach out for additional information, you're welcome to reach out to myself directly or Assistant Superintendent Mr. Higgins as well for a more detailed conversation.
Thank you very much. That does answer my question exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. We can do that. Welcome.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to share some of my concerns. I have a son who's seven years old and he, well, this past school year, he was in first grade and he's going into second grade, but I'm not sure as to what the plans are for this upcoming school year. And I guess my concerns would be if it's virtual, how that would actually benefit my son being that he has special needs and it's very hard for him to pay attention. And during the regular school year, he has, he's mainstreamed, but he has an assist, like a teacher's aide with him, assisting him, you know, giving him that extra support that he needs. So I don't feel like he can get that virtually. And I just kind of wanted to get an idea as to if we are going virtual, what is going to be done for those children that have those special needs and need that extra attention?
Thank you for your question. Can you just please say your name? It didn't come up the first. I know it's on the computer.
My name?
Yes, I, we didn't.
Jessica.
We didn't hear Jessica. Jessica? Okay.
Yes.
Jessica.
Thank you for your public comment. Appreciate you joining us this evening. I will refer you to a couple of places for additional information. One, if you haven't had a chance to visit our website recently, there's a significant amount of information on the website detailing our reopening plans. You'll also on Friday, two days, receive another detailed update from me about the reopening plans. The current plans do include a hybrid model, which does include significant amount of in-person instruction. But lastly, I also would encourage you to please reach out directly to your case manager for your child and make sure that you have an open dialogue regarding the concerns that you have so that we're taking them into consideration as we move to start the school year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
The other person that wasn't here dropped out.
Okay. Oh, so we only have two. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we only have two. Can I please have a motion to close the public session?
So moved.
Second. Can I have a show of hands, please? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our communications listed. Mrs. DeCarlo, do we have any further communications to be included?
Uh, no, there hasn't been anything further.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda is to approve the minutes from July 16th. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any more discussion regarding the minutes? If not, Mrs. DeCarlo, can I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Selbord?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 22nd meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any board discussion on July 22nd? If not, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Selbord?
Yes.
So moved. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the retreat on July 30th?
So moved.
Second.
That movement was made by?
Mrs. Smith. And then Mrs. Shields. Um, can I please have a roll call for the minutes?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kudalaru?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Selbord?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Rockaway Township. I hope everyone is doing well and keeping a good spirits. I would like to begin tonight by thanking the board for a very productive board retreat. We remain on track to share board and district goals as well as a three-day strategic plan with the community in the coming weeks. Aspects of our strategic plan have been adjusted in response to our aim to create an online instructional day model in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I am excited to share the overall plan with the community in the very near future. I would also like to thank the community for your overall responsiveness these past few weeks. It has helped us tremendously in keeping our planning on track to safely reopen our schools by sharing your questions quickly about the green, gold, or full virtual schedules that we posted in Genesis two weeks ago, where we were able to quickly resolve many issues in a timely manner. I am sure many in our community either watched or have heard about Governor Murphy's announcement this afternoon about allowing school districts in New Jersey to have the option to open the school year with a full virtual model for all students if they are unable to meet the criteria set forth by the Department of Education to reopen schools for some in-person instruction. As of today, the conditions within our district have us on track to meet this criteria and move forward and reopen our schools with our hybrid model. That being said, I am committed to maintain full transparency with our community about our reopening plans so people are empowered to make informed decisions. To that end, this Friday, I will share our full plan with frequently asked questions document with our entire community and post it on our website. I will also plan a presentation about our reopening plans for the, for the August 22nd Board of Education meeting where I will highlight key elements of our reopening plans. I do want to encourage the community to view the plan that I share as a living document. It is not final because the pandemic is not fine. As the conditions of the pandemic shift, we will be prepared to shift and make changes in the best interest of our students and staff. As I know childcare services remain a concern for many of our families with our hybrid model, I am pleased to share that the Randolph YMCA is creating a three-day option for our families to consider. This model would allow families to opt into full-day childcare services on the days their children are in school or are not in school for face-to-face instruction. This will also come at a lower cost than the initial model they originally proposed. The details about these services will also be shared with the community this Friday when I send out the full plan. I am super excited to share with the community that our summer reading program, which featured two virtual book club sessions, one in July and one in August, included over 80 students attending each session with multiple teachers. While responding to the conditions of the pandemic these past few months has rightly been our priority and will remain so, I want to take a moment to say thank you to those students and their teachers for demonstrating great resilience by continuing to help us build a love for reading across our district. Even while we're still in this virtual world, I'm so very proud of our students for opting into this wonderful opportunity. In closing tonight, my message to the community is to continue to reiterate yet again that this past school year proved we're better together. And so as we prepare to kick off this new school year, may we all live by the spirit of let's stay together. If you're on a green schedule or a gold schedule or a full virtual schedule, let's stay together. And please remain connected with us and please do not hesitate to reach out to us with any questions or concerns you may have. With that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, is the business administrator's report? Mrs. DeCarlo?
Good evening. As we get closer to September and the opening of school, we are ramping up our cleaning protocols and providing additional training to our custodial staff. We are considering moving some of the custodial hours around to allow for more midday cleaning. I would like to thank both our custodial and maintenance staffs for their hard work and dedication during these unprecedented times. We will be meeting with the DEP next week to discuss the KDM filtration system. They have not given us a final approval on our design, so we will be seeking an extension to our permit as the work will not be done this summer. Parking lots are on schedule for completion before the start of school and our gyms will also be ready. We have met with our engineering firm and will be pursuing procedures to put in place for enhanced air filtration. Please know that we are taking the utmost care and precautions to make sure that when your children return to school, they will be in a safe environment. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or comments, Mrs. DeCarlo? Thank you, Mrs. DeCarlo. Next on the agenda is the, is the curriculum report, Mr. Higgins?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, and hello, Rockaway Township. We've begun a series of professional development sessions this week with a session called Brainstorming for Hybrid Learning, in which panels of teachers asked questions and provided opportunities for brainstorming about their models for planning and organizing their classrooms this year. From this, we gathered so much great information about what our needs are and we will create several new sessions around this information. Thank you to all the teachers that joined in. Later this week, we will be sharing our best practices for online instruction sessions with the staff to build upon these initial conversations. Our work over the next few weeks will focus on putting together clear paths for our teachers, parents, and students about what our academic aims are, what our processes are, and how we plan to build on the success of last spring's OIG model. Over the course of the last few years, this district has invested heavily in educational technology as evidenced by our one-to-one program at CMS and our extensive use of technology in our classrooms from K through 80. This past spring served to show how well-versed our teachers and students are in using the tools that we provide. Moving forward, we've committed to ensuring that we continue to innovate using educational technology. Often, we look at the tools that our teachers and students use first. However, there is much that goes on behind the scenes to make all of that work. Our IT staff has been hard at work on the backend of our technology systems and we are pleased to say that systems are more ready than ever to begin the year. Using a tool called Clever, our RT, our, our IT staff has rostered our students into all of our systems, enabling single sign-on across nearly all the applications we use. This makes teachers and students' lives much easier by providing them with one account that unlocks all of their tools. We are now in August, a month where we try as hard as we can to hang on to the last traces of summer days, but we are inevitably pulled toward the anxiety and excitement of a new school year starting. For those of us that work in schools, that, that pull starts earlier than most. We spend the better part of late July and early August thinking about our upcoming year, our students, our supplies, our plans, what is new and changing from the previous year, and we put tremendous pressure on ourselves to get it right each September. And we pride ourselves on making sure every student has a perfect first day. This year is inevitably different. The stress is still there, but it's been added to by other outside forces. But we will still do our best to make September 2020 the best start we've ever had. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Higgins? Or comments? Can you board? Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Next, we are on to committee reports. Do I have any committees?
So I would like to share the policy committee notes. Policy committee met on July 29th from 5:45 to 8:45 at Central Office. The attendees were Dr. T., Kristi, Kudalaru, Aaron Thomasini, myself. And when I sent the notes out to all of you, I inadvertently left off Bevars, our chief tech officer, who was there and very helpful. We reviewed policies 2361, 3321. And we were discussing the acceptable use of computer networks and computer resources as they became two program and teaching staff, and then the same edits were also applied for support staff. These came out of online learning guidelines, district apps. We received and discussed feedback from Bevars on that. And you were, Peter, were very helpful in finalizing the tech language. We also are aware that we have required hearing when we are sharing the policy 2361 that will be upcoming in September, and we also identified their staff member training included as well. In addition, we reviewed policy 3283, electronic communication between teaching staff members and students. This refers to teaching staff, students, and is also regarding our distance learning. We received policy alert language as well, and we discussed feedback from Bevars as well. And Peter and Bevars were very helpful in doing the language consistency for that as well. A policy 5516, use of electronic communication and recording devices. This pertains to distance learning, consent, and we again received and discussed feedback from Bevars and we received help in the language consistency. In addition, policy 7510, use of school facilities was recommended by the operations committee and it will be up for a first read at our next meeting. This was in response to the pandemic and the procedures were streamlined. As you'll notice on the agenda later on, under policy, we do have three policies that are listed to go for a first read. We will be recommending that those policies are tabled and you'll see them at the future meeting. In addition, the additional tech policies that were mentioned here as well will also be going up for a first read as soon as those revisions are finalized by Central Office. We continue to obtain feedback regarding the homework and online learning policies and our administration continues to work and finalize the grading system regulation 2624. Our upcoming meeting is next week, August 19th, from 5:45 to 7:45 at Central Office.
Thank you. Just a note, we're tabling it because of the glitch in communication. Nothing else was behind it. Okay. That's just, just information on this. Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for the council?
I think for negotiations, some good news, the board committee and association met this past Monday, August 10th. Parties are pleased to report that a memorandum of agree, of agreement. Parties are pleased to report that a memorandum of agree, of agreement has been reached. Upon agreement of salary guise and ratification by the association, a memorandum of agreement will be presented to the full board for ratification. And that was with the administrators.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Operations, we just have a meeting on Monday, 8:24 at 4:00 P. M. We're actually going to go on a facility tour. The only thing I have from the education committee is we're meeting next Wednesday in Central Office at 4:00 P. M. That's all.
Next on the agenda are personnel items. We have several items that go on to page 6, 16 items. Can I please have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for personnel items?
So moved.
Second. Since this is personnel, there will be no board discussion. Can I please have a roll call on personnel items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next, we have no H I V, so we'll move on to education, and there are two items for approval. Can I please have a motion to approve the education recommendation? So moved. Second. Thank you. Do I have any board discussion regarding the education items? Okay. If no discussion or questions, can I please have a roll call on education items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda is special education. There are seven items. Can I please have a motion to approve the special education recommendations?
So moved.
Second. Any board discussion or comments regarding special education? If not, may I please have a roll call, Mrs. DeCarlo?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is administration. There is one item, and it's a donation. Can I please have a motion to approve the administration's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, may I please have a roll call?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
The next portion of the agenda is finance. Can I please have a motion to approve the finance recommendations? We have five of them.
So moved.
Second. Thomasini and Mrs. Brooks. Thank you. Do I have any more discussion? Comments, questions? If not, can I please have a roll, roll call on finance items?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Take a motion and table the policy.
Not, not to, not to recommend it first and then table it, or?
Take a motion and table them.
Okay.
If you, if you go to move them, then you're going to have a vote on moving them.
Okay.
There's support tabling. You have to take a motion and table. And you table all of the, because it's all free, correct?
Yeah, everything.
So take a motion and table the policy.
Okay, I was just-
Yep, that's okay.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to table the, the policy recommendations?
So moved.
Second. And can I have a roll call to table?
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mrs. Correllaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Mezic?
Yes.
Mrs. Shields?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thomasini?
Yes.
Mrs. Helford?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Now on to discussion items, old and new business. Is there any board member that has any old or new business that they'd like to share?
I have two items. As far as old business, it's kind of older business. I know last year, we had a presentation about the Copeland Health Fair, and Michelle Morey, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing correctly, came and spoke, and she wrote a book, Breaking Into My Life, and gave us all a copy. I'm guilty, I could kind of put it on my shelf and forgot about it, but Mrs. Brooks read it and highly recommended it, so I did bring it on my vacation with me, and it is wonderful. Like, if you guys haven't cracked it open yet, I highly suggest it. It's fascinating.
To know, it is on my shelf. I am guilty of that.
And second, new business stuff, just another kudos out to the I T department, Central Office, those online videos that we're, you know, sending out, or I love them. Thank you.
And that's it. Anyone else? Any old or new business?
I just want to, dido Mrs. Shields, the, all of the schools, their Twitter accounts, their Instagrams, they're still fairly active. Mrs. Wizniewski at K D M wishes kids a happy birthday every day on Instagram, and it's a highlight of their day. By name, my son is waiting on Sunday to log into mom's Insta so he can see it. Again, just kudos to all the staff for adding those silly, simple little touches that mean so much to these kids. Something to look forward to. On another note too, another staff members, we have teachers doing Google meets, optional Google meets. Kids are hopping in. Again, I have a son who logs in every Wednesday and is excited to see his friends and his teacher, and they just chit chat about what's going on. They even discuss some concerns or things they miss and hope, and it's, it's really just super wonderful. So we have a lot of staff in this district that goes above and beyond outside of contractual hours. And again, I just want to thank everyone for that. It's really, really exceptional.
I could just acknowledge, thank you very much for saying that. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Exceptional.
And I also have a book to lend to anyone who doesn't have a copy. It's very good.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, it brings us to our second public comment section. Is there anyone in the waiting room? Nope. Okay, so. And if there is nothing else, then basically we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Let it be noted at 8:10 P. M. Thank you. Good night, everyone.